Good evening, we're calling our board meeting to order. We're a little early tonight, we're starting at 5:30, obviously instead of 6:00. And we will start by, um... Just one second, please. Okay, we will start with our champion student recognition, Ms. Kaitlin Ryle.
Yes, thank you, good evening board, and good evening Wampus Cats. Tonight, yes, we are starting out with our champion student of the month recognition. So, not too long ago, I had the opportunity to sit down with the sweetest 3rd grader at Ellen Smith Elementary, Ms. Ellen Davenport. And so there, I got to see and hear her sweet little heart as she talked about how she just loves to make crafts for others, for their birthdays, and at that time, she remembered her birthday, she said, "Oh, when I get home, I gotta make them a card." And so she just has just the sweetest giving heart, so enjoy this video, and then I'll introduce you to Ella. Yes, we'll pause that.
Okay, we wanted to give this young lady our undivided attention, so we're ready for you, Ms. Ryle.
Hello, my name's Ella Davenport, and I'm in 3rd grade at Ellen Smith Elementary. My favorite activity is art, because I like to draw and paint, and my favorite subject is math, because I like a challenge, and my favorite teacher is Ms. Davis, because she's really fun. My favorite thing about Ellen Smith is the field trips and the behavior bashes, like the snowball fight and decorating cookies, and then also the, um, reading challenge. And if you read two chapter books or one chapter book and five graphic novels, we gotta go to Starbucks Cafe, and every month, we do that. In my free time, I like making arts and crafts with my friends, for people who have birthdays or weddings, or anything else.
Hi, I'm Ms. Davis, I'm a 3rd grade reading teacher here at Ellen Smith, and I have the pleasure of having Ella in my homeroom class and also in my reading class. Ella is a great student, she shows up every day, ready to learn, and just this last week, we had Alice testing, and she asked if she could get here early, so she could help make sure all the Chromebooks were charged and get them passed out. But beyond just taking her academics so seriously and always trying her best, she's a great role model to other students, she's always noticing who needs help, and is more than willing to step up and give them a helping hand. So we just appreciate students, we appreciate Ella and other students like Ella, and we're so thankful to have her here at Ellen Smith.
I'm proud to be the champion of the month at Ellen Smith, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna do something a little different. We would like to recognize a special guest who will lead the pledge of allegiance with Ella, our champion student. Our special guest tonight is Brigadier General Chad Bridges, the adjutant general of Arkansas. On this very special day, Veterans Day, we would like to say thank you, General Bridges, for your over 34 years of service. We thank you for your four deployments, Sanaa, Egypt, Baghdad, Iraq, Katrina, and Germany. We also thank you for the many assignments you have been a part of, Fort Hood, Texas, Fort Bliss, Texas, Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, Fort Gillum, Georgia, Carlisle Berks, Pennsylvania, Arlington, Virginia, the Pentagon, and Camp Robinson, Arkansas. General, your service and leadership is greatly appreciated. If everyone would now stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Ella Davenport and Brigadier General Chad Bridges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we give our general a hand, please?
Okay, today Brigadier General Bridges is going to assist me in continuing the celebration of Veterans Day. At this time, hold. At this time, please help me welcome to the front our Conway High School JROTC led by, or cadet leadership, led by Lieutenant Colonel Shelby, Sergeant First Class Michael Webb, and Command Sergeant Major Foster. I want to share with you all, in the words of Lieutenant Colonel Shelby, a short list of the most significant accomplishments of the CHS JROTC in the last two years. I told him earlier that I would like to see the long list, because this is a good one. Here at Conway High School, we have 195 students currently enrolled, making us the second-largest JROTC program in the state. The United States Army Cadet Command has awarded us the title of Honor Unit with Distinction for the past two years. Last year, we underwent an accreditation inspection by the Army Cadet Command and earned the highest rating given. Our competitive academic and leadership team competed in the worldwide finals, where they completed a series of assessments over various academic and leadership topics. Last year, 17 of our cadets joined the military upon graduation, and six more entered into senior ROTC at the colleges or universities they attended. This year, our cadet battalion commander has been awarded the nomination to the United States Military Academy at West Point by the President of the United States and the Secretary of the Army. Please give it up for this incredible program. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to General Bridges.
Thank you very much. Number one, not every school has a JROTC program, okay? And I can tell you, because I've been around talking to a lot of different superintendents and school principals that want to get a JROTC program. I'll give you two. Fayetteville, Fayetteville's one, Cersei's another. And so, not only do you have one, you have an excellent program with leaders here that care about students, and students that are putting in the work, to the point where they get selected to a service academy, which is, I think, very demonstrative of Conway High School and the district. And so, these leaders here are putting in the work to develop our kids in this school, and the kids are participating in this program at high numbers, and it's making a difference. And I can tell you, it's making a difference in the Arkansas National Guard. And so, we've had a historic year in recruiting, and Conway High School and this JROTC program has been a big part of that. There's 2,200 Army National Guard recruiters across the country. The number three recruiter in the entire nation was here, in Conway High School, that recruited Conway. And so, there is a big, I think, element of patriotism in the city of Conway and the school district, represented tonight, and really represented by the people standing up here. And so, what better way to recognize military service on Veterans Day, which happens to be a school district meeting, a board meeting, than tonight? And to see these great, great Americans serving, continuing to serve, to, I think, give vision, opportunity to these people that are represented here, and there's so many more in the program that we couldn't fit into this room. And so, I'm a resident of Conway, I live five minutes down the road, and so it's proud to see, I'm proud of the district, I'm proud of Conway High School, I'm proud to be a citizen here and a resident, and I'm proud of what these teammates are doing.
I'll try to speak loud enough that I'm on the mic, because I want to come down here with these guys. I just want to tell you, General Bridges, we appreciate you being here today. It's by no accident that he's here on Veterans Day. If you're a veteran, could you please stand with us, fellow veterans, if you don't mind, please stand at this time. There we go, hey, we wanted to tell you... No matter what happens, whether we agree or disagree in this country, the great thing that we have are nights like tonight, when we can all come together and we can be at a board meeting, we can talk civically about what we need to do moving forward for our school district, for our students, for our country. We wouldn't be able to do those things without brave men and women that have made the decisions to do what these guys and gals are doing. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, Happy Veterans Day, it's a good day, I'm glad you came today, and we appreciate you, General. All right, good job, guys, we appreciate you.
Can I re-recognize Sergeant Rankin?
Absolutely.
So the guy that I was just telling you about is Staff Sergeant Rob Rankin, he's right there. And so, this guy is, I think, a great resource for someone who's interested in serving in the Arkansas Army National Guard. There've been 33 of those people that chose to do that this last year, and it will change, it will change people's lives.
Thank you all again.
Okay. All right, at this time, for another Wampus Cat Pride recognition, we have some very special students who have worked very, very hard to be national merit semifinalists. I would like to invite Dr. Kate Worley, Principal of Conway High School, to recognize these students.
All right, so I have one of my students with me this evening, and the other one I'm quite certain is still at band practice, so we're trying to fetch her. She, there she comes, all right. Caroline, I was like, where'd she go? You're good, okay. All right, so I get to do the best part of my job, which is talk about my amazing kids. I've joked before, if you give a principal a hot mic and let her talk about her kids, like you're gonna be up here for a long time, but these two students are very special at Conway High School, and are outstanding examples of not only students at Conway High School, but academic scholars. And so, they were selected out of 1.3 million juniors who took the PSMS NSQT in about 20,000 high schools nationwide. So they made the cut out of 1.3 million other juniors in the nation, which is amazing. These talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition to try to earn 76,930 different national merit scholarships, which is to the tune of about $26 million that they're gonna give away to the national merit finalists. So we're very proud of you guys, and I'm gonna share just a little bit about their accomplishments. I'll start with Ms. Caroline Crossler first. She's an impressive student, her academic record speaks volumes, she has a 4.2 GPA and a 34 on her ACT. She has a perfect score in English and in reading, which makes my English teacher heart proud, it's awesome, and success in nine AP courses, which is amazing, one of which she self-studied for, AP Music Theory. She earned a score of four on that test. She is a rare dual all-state honoree in both choir and clarinet, an achievement no other student at our school has matched. She devotes more than 20 hours a week to rehearsals, performances, and leadership in both disciplines. She's a section leader in band and choir. She also co-founded the Conway Up, an outreach effort aimed at increasing college success for underrepresented students. They've already raised over $25,000 in scholarship pledges, and it features a custom-built website that Caroline helped design, which is amazing. So whether she's singing the alma mater, or going to nursing homes this afternoon, if I'm correct, with choir, yes, at a football game, leading a study group for ACT prep, we're performing, she exemplifies maturity, compassion, and intellectual curiosity. She is reliable under pressure, incredibly organized, and deeply grounded in the values that prioritize both excellence and service. Now I get to talk about Will. If y'all have been around band, our band program, at any point, Will will stick out, not only see tall, because of his impressive head of hair as well, he's a great kid, and so I've gotten the honor to get to see him do a lot of things with band over my tenure as high school principal. And so, this is Will Schlitz. I still didn't get it right, did I? Okay, I practiced, too, I got nervous every time I messed y'all's names up, all right. So this is what Will's swim coach had to say about him, "Will is dependently and truly commendable. Whether asked to swim challenging events or support his team in other ways, he approaches every task with a can-do attitude and without complaint. His willingness to step up whenever necessary speaks volumes about his character and commitment to the collective success of his team. In addition to his unwavering dependability, Will demonstrates excellence across a wide range of activities. He balances his time and effort between tennis, swimming, soccer, and band. Maintaining high level of engagement and presence in each, this level of involvement, coupled with his dedication, is a testament to his strong work ethic and ability to manage his responsibilities effectively. He's also a section leader with band, and he's an impactful leader. He's an outstanding student, maintaining a 4.23 GPA and ranking 34th out of 725 students currently. His ACT composite score is a 33, and further highlights his academic aptitude. I believe he's planning to go study an area in STEM once you graduate, and Caroline is doing medical, maybe with women's health, correct? Okay, so y'all, please give a round of applause to the STEM.
All right, we're still having fun here. Okay, I have one more Wampus Cat Pride Award, and I get the honor of introducing you to the 2025 back-to-back 6A volleyball state champions. At this time, I would like to invite Athletic Director Greg Hughes to speak on behalf of the Conway High School Lady Cats volleyball team.
It was never-ending, wasn't it? As they came in, I didn't think that was gonna stop. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a great part of my job, to I get to stand up here and recognize kids that just work their tails off and succeed. This year's bunch, two-time state champions, as we said, unbelievable, 25 and 5, yeah, 30 and 5, I'm sorry, 30 and 5 season record, okay, which is amazing upon itself. Didn't win a conference championship, but we'll take that anytime over that state championship, you agree? Real quick about this bunch, these seniors, two conference championships, two state championships, one state runner-up. So all three years as they played, they were in the state championship. You don't say that very often about any sport, okay, so that's an amazing accomplishment, okay? Juniors, two state titles in two years. Not saying you have anything to look up to, but don't let it go, all right? Be there. Now we'll talk about Coach Crowe, okay? Absolutely, none of this happens without those two coaches, okay? And I would like to say that Coach Fason has been involved in all state titles, has been a big part of everything that's happened here. Coach Crowe broke the 600 wins this year, okay? That's a big accomplishment in U.S. history. She's 605 and 138 in her time here, 295 and 26 in conference. 26 losses coached, 24th or 3rd year?
24.
So you're almost going with one loss a year, if you look at that. Guys, that's impressive, I don't care what sport you're talking about, that's impressive, okay? 18 conference titles, three state championships, two runner-up? Two runner-up, okay, so that's five times in the state championship. Okay, again, I don't care what sport you're talking about, with that longevity, even have that longevity, and be able to go and still have the drive and the fire that Lately has is amazing, okay? So she does an awesome job, okay? So I know at this point...
We may have a little something for her, huh? Hey, Coach Fason, we want to tell you, thank you too, we know that you've all worked very, very hard.
I'm thrilled to meet y'all, I was looking to see all of y'all play this year, y'all did a fantastic job, coaches, fantastic job. Coach Laura Crowe, in honor of an incredible legacy of leadership, guiding the Conway Lady Cats volleyball team to back-to-back state titles, and celebrating 600 career victories.
Okay, we appreciate all the achievements at Conway Public School. At this time, we will go on into our phase of our meeting where we have patron come in, I have Jimmy Cavan.
All right, guys, let's talk about hypocrisy tonight. Hypocrisy defined, "The practice of claiming to have moral standards or beliefs to which one's own behavior does not conform." Now Jason, board members, I'll include myself in this. I want you to raise your hand if any of you have never, never in your entire life, in any form or context whatsoever, have never said the N-word. I'm including myself in this.
I don't think we have to respond, we won't respond.
No, you don't have to respond.
Okay, keep going.
You certainly don't have to respond, but I'll let you know, my hand didn't raise. Jason, board members, let me ask you this question, what's the difference between verbally stating a word or stating a word in writing? Nothing. Andy Ashley, Preston Echols, Kate Worley, Greg Hughes investigated Ben Lindsey's use of the N-word. In their summary, they stated the word N-I-G-G-A four times.
I'm gonna ask you not to speak on personnel issues, please, or call personnel names.
No ma'am, that's, you're not, that's, the law says I can do that all day long. Three players in the state, three players in their statements said N-I-G-G-A once, two others said N-I-G-G-A three times. Coach Goins said in his statement, N-I-G-G-A once. Caleb London, the guy who put the wood and lighter fluid around the stake that Coach Lindsey got burned at, in his complaint to A.D. Hughes and the board, used the word N-I-G-G-A four times. So why isn't the board fired Ashley, Echols, Worley, Hughes, or Goins? Why have you not suspended or expelled the students who use the word N-I-G-G-A? Now you guys can say, Jimmy, they were just repeating what Coach Lindsey said. Well, Coach Lindsey was just repeating what the player said. So let's take it a further step. The previous coach had multiple complaints from students and parents about his use of offensive language that made them feel uncomfortable. He was never suspended, and he was never fired. If this whole thing isn't hypocrisy, I don't know what is. In the attempt to keep the people from seeing this hypocrisy by not live-streaming the hearing for Coach Lindsey, that failed miserably. At last count, the article that came out Sunday night has been viewed 304,209 times. The people see the hypocrisy. Now, I'll be back next meeting to point more hypocrisies out, but until then, I want to publicly invite each of you individually, and Jason, come on a podcast with me, and let's have a open, open, transparent discussion about this issue. Thank you.
Now we'll get to our business at hand. We have approval of consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or are there any questions?
I do have some questions, however, based on the length of our agenda tonight, if I can, I don't know, emailing or circling back tonight, which probably won't be a good idea, I'm willing to do whatever.
Dr. Petty, that sounds good, just shoot us an email, and we'll get them to you by the end of the week.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Ayes have it. At this point, we have a report from our interim superintendent, Mr. Black.
All right, I will try to be brief, board, and Madam President, and thank y'all for being here tonight. If you think back to July 1, is when our time started as a team, the board and our administrative team started about five months ago. So what I want to bring forward to you tonight is the state of the district, some of the work that's happened, who we are as a district, the foundation that we're building, and where we'd like to go. So I'll start with that, are you gonna draft for me, Ms. Stone?
Okay, all right, I'll go to the next slide. All right, so I'll be brief, I'm gonna try to be 15 to 20 minutes, okay? My team's gonna keep an account on me tonight, because as Dr. Petty said, we've got a lengthy meeting, all right? I see you looking at me, Ms. Lyndon. We'll try to be pretty quick, okay? That's a slide of y'all, that's a good-looking slide right there, okay? Good picture, that's our school board, that's the training hours. Some of the information I'm sharing with you tonight, it is a statute that it needs to be shared with the public annually, so that's the state of the district, and then some of the information are endeavors that we've taken as a team to build a foundation, and then ideas that we have moving forward. So that's some information on our school board, we'll go to the next slide. We'll go to the next slide. Let's see, I could probably help out with this. All right, here we go. So some of the really good information that I'll share, and I don't want to steal our curriculum instruction team's thunder tonight, uh, just recently, the state adopted measures, uh, for each district to have a rating. And so a collective rating for all of your, all of your campuses, uh, and we are so thrilled and want to tell all of our principals and our team, great job, commendable work. We were rated as a B. Uh, he will go through, uh, yeah, you can give it a hand, go ahead and clap, yeah, you clap. We will go down the break, we will go through the breakdown of how that looks statewide. Uh, of course, there's always more work to do, uh, but we're really, really thankful for the spot that we're in and we know how to get there moving forward. Um, funding, we have roughly a one-hundred-and-eight million-dollar budget, right at a hundred-and-nine million-dollar budget. Uh, seventy-five percent of that goes to salaries, that's typical for a school district. And then you've got supplies and equipment and services at sixteen percent. And then our debt services, that's your bond payments, around nine percent, all right? Our millage is at thirty-eight point one, I think we're well aware of that. Our leadership team, I want to tell them, thank you. Um, it takes a team to get the work done, no one can get it done alone. So we have a really good district leadership team, we have a good executive leadership team. I want to thank Dr. Jeff Standridge that I'm looking at, he's come in and been a part of our team as an advisor, uh, and then our teachers and our staff from the bus, from the bus shop, uh, all the way to the classroom. Uh, it takes everybody to get this thing done, so we're very, very thankful. I, I got it, Ms. Don, I'm gonna take it from here, is that, I'm gonna try to do a good job. No, you're good, you're good. All right, some of you may be wondering, I don't know how many of you know, this isn't trivia, but what a wampus cat is. I know I had to figure this out when I got here, okay? So a wampus cat is known by its six legs, four to run at the speed of light and two to fight with all its might. So we wanted to make sure we put that information in there for you if you didn't know. Something that you may not know is that we're the ninth-largest school district in the state of Arkansas, okay? That's a pretty large district, all right? And, uh, when you look at a breakdown of our demographics and you think about what we looked like ten, twenty years ago, I want to go into a little bit of detail for you. Right now, we stand as forty-four percent white, uh, thirty-one percent black, Hispanic or Latino is fourteen percent, two or more races is eight, and Asian is right at one, two percent, okay? So you can look at our demographics and see, uh, that our district over time i- is changing. It, it looks a little bit different. And, and we're excited about the diversity, uh, and the opportunities that that brings. Ninety-five-hundred students, that's something that we'll visit a little bit more in detail, uh, of ideas and thoughts and processes that we can make sure that we align on, uh, to go out there and make sure we're grabbing those students where there's opportunity. All right, I want to celebrate for a second. Our district teacher of the year, when we started off this year, we had a really exciting convocation, i- it felt like a pep rally, uh, and one of the big reasons was Kate Smith. Uh, she did a fantastic job, uh, during her presentation. One of the quotes that stood out to us is you're not just a teacher, you're a legacy builder, you're a champion for kids, you're someone's first flight. Sometimes we're the first person to say, I believe in you, the first to say, the accent you're worried about, it's beautiful, the first to say, you're not a problem to fix, you're a story worth reading, all right? Those are the kinds of teachers, uh, that we have in our district, all across the district. And then our employee of the, of the year, uh, which is certified personnel, she's at Gemstone and that's Ms. Lauren Bisby. Being in education isn't just hard work, it's heart work. The moment isn't just about one person or one award, it's about the many people who have supported, mentored, and stood beside me. It's about the strength of our team. And so you'll hear this theme over and over again, it takes a team to accomplish what we're trying to get done. And I could go on and on and on, my team's looking at me, but I won't do it, all right? And so is Ms. Linda. Uh, teachers of the year, we wanted to make sure we acknowledge them again, uh, we had a really good time with them, we meet with them once a quarter, um, or yeah, Cavan, Cavan Riles sets up those meetings for us, um, and she does a really good job of facilitating that. Uh, but the information we want from our teachers and our employees of the year are how are things going out there? They are leaders amongst leaders. Uh, these people were chose amongst their peers, uh, to be teacher or to be employee of the year. So getting the information from them about what we're doing really well, uh, or areas that we need to work on and, and try to improve, uh, is very, very impactful. We also, uh, acknowledged them at the football game the other night, and that was a good time. So, uh, we want to make sure that they're, they're recognized. Staff, uh, some of you may not know, we have roughly thirteen-hundred staff in Conway Public Schools. The percent with a bachelor's degree is forty-seven percent, master's degree is forty-eight, an advanced degree past the master's is five percent. Our average teacher salary is around sixty-six-five, and then the average for the state, now the state runs about a year and a half in the rear, so that means we will not get the updated information until January, but as is right now with the information we have, the average for the state is fifty-nine thousand. So you can see in the comparison group, uh, that we're working hard to stay out in front, okay? These are some notable accomplishments by our staff, I will not belabor that tonight, uh, but that's really good information to read. Uh, once we're done with this presentation, uh, it will be out for public consumption tomorrow, okay? So you'll have that information, you can go back and take a look. SEAL, Conway Educational Aspiring Leaders, what is that? Well, that's our SEAL team, all right? Uh, and when you think about that, what is it? It is where we ensure that despite whatever job role you're in, if you want to go after a leadership role, there's an opportunity for you to, for you to apply, uh, for this committee or for this group, we meet once a month, they come in and they learn from leaders throughout the district, from people who have been a part of the SEAL program, who've gone on to become an administrator or supervisor, uh, or maybe an instructional coach and what that needs to look like. So, uh, we do a really good job of trying to grow our own, uh, we don't rely on people to come in, we're always looking for talent outside of the district, but we also have an obligation to grow our own from within. So that's part of the SEAL team. Technology, these folks work extremely hard. If you look at this picture right here, uh, this was a Friday fun day for this group. I go over and they've got roughly, I don't know how many Chromebooks we're looking at right there, Adam Stroben, but I-
Two-hundred-and-seventy-six.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-six. And, uh, and they spend Fridays ensuring, when you think about our resources and, and how we utilize our funds, uh, these guys and gals sit down on a Friday and ensure we're going through all of these Chromebooks, and if we can take care of them, if we can get them back out there on the market and be utilized by our students, our staff, we get them back out there before we go into our resources. Uh, on top of that, uh, they manage fourteen thousand Chromebooks and they've taken care of roughly eight thousand service tickets this year. And, uh, we're not even halfway through the school year, so kudos to that team. What I want you to see is it takes a village, as they say, all right? So, how about this? How about our transportation department? We have a hundred buses, Ms. Barbara Lyons is not here, but she does a fantastic job with her team, uh, thirty-two-hundred miles driven daily, okay? Just think about that for a minute. Seventy-nine routes, uh, there's a lot of people out there on the road, making sure that those tiny hotties and those kids get to school and they get to school safely, all right? And that we have a warm bus when they jump on there in the morning. That's a big deal when they've been standing out at that bus stop. I can tell you, my mom's a bus driver, I know, all right? Maintenance projects, a hundred-and-twenty-one maintenance staff, that includes our custodial team as well. Uh, these folks work really, really hard to make sure everything is where it needs to be when our students show up in the morning, uh, when our staff gets to work, uh, so they can do the job that they're doing at the ground level, uh, to teach our students. So we thank them for the work that they do. All right, food service, food service, there's eighty-three food service on staff, uh, we have fed to date, right at twen-, oh, I'm sorry, five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand breakfasts, over a million lunches, over a million lunches. That's crazy. Isn't that, that, that is fantastic, all right? Almost seven-thousand daily lunches, and then you may not know this, as we talk about our demographics changing, uh, sixty-one percent free and reduced lunch. If you go back, what that looked like ten years ago, uh, there, there's a big difference. There's a shift happening in Conway, and to overlook that would be remiss. Uh, so we need to make sure that we stay cognizant of an ever-changing Conway, all right? Smart mouth pizza, I know a lot about it, cause my son is spending a lot of money over there, uh, at the middle school on that, uh, to the tune, I'll, I'll leave that out, but he's, he's eating that pizza. All right, it's a big hit. All right, special education services, I see Ms. Kelly Gordon here, they do a fantastic job, if you build it, they will come. Um, we have built a really good special education department, uh, so there are students from across the central Arkansas region, uh, that look to us for education. That doesn't mean we don't make mistakes, that doesn't mean there's not adjustments that need to happen, uh, but all in all, uh, there's a lot of people coming to our district, uh, for special services and special education. Safety and security, well, let me pause on that for a minute. Uh, RBTs, I want to tell the board, thank you very, very much. We've heard a lot of positive comments, uh, from our principals, uh, from the special education staff, um, from leadership, uh, that, that resource, uh, you agreeing, uh, to approve that and adopt that early on in August, those people are starting to go into the classrooms and, uh, it, it is having a resounding effect. Uh, of course, uh, there's always the need for more, uh, but we'll cross that bridge as we go, and, uh, those people are doing a really, really good job under Sam Carter-Scott, so we're very, very appreciative. All right, our ends, I would be remiss if I don't hit on our, our ends. Uh, there's a lot of medication, there's a lot of situations that we go through day in and day out at the, uh, at, thank you, uh, that we go, uh, throughout the school day, um, from, from knees, uh, that are hurt to give an ICE so that kindergarten goes back to class and doesn't need to call mom, uh, because they have a headache that day. So we all know how that goes. It's amazing, uh, what ICE will do, uh, for some of those kindergarten and first graders. But our nurses do a fantastic job. Safety and security, um, we have ten SROs that do a fantastic job, uh, mobilizing and moving around our campuses. Uh, safety and security is of the utmost, if you do not have safe and sound schools, the rest of it, uh, really doesn't matter. Our students have to feel safe, our staff, staff has to feel safe, and I want to thank Mr. Eric King and his team for what they do. So I don't know where he's at. There, the governor, there he is, hey bud. All right, good job, Mr. Eric King, for all that you do. All right, moving forward, Sally Cone preschool, I said tiny hotties, it starts over there at the preschools, the ABCs and the one-two-threes. Um, our team over there has done a fantastic job over the last two years. We implemented a program, uh, Fueling Brains, um, you can see the stats, you can see the data, uh, that has been effective for our team, um, and something that we're working on moving forward is a preschool community collaborative. What does that mean? That means even if you have a preschool that's in Conway and you're not at Sally Cone, we're gonna come to you, we want to partner with you, because eventually, those four-year-olds that you're serving are gonna move into our public schools. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything and invest in everything we can in those four-year-olds, whether they're over here at this preschool or at Sally Cone, and we're all working together, so when they get to the elementary, they're as prepared as they can be, okay? So that's what that'll look like moving forward. All right, this is a snapshot of some really good, uh, information and some, uh, accolades from our campuses. I'll hit real quick on Ida Burns, uh, their overall rating and their ELA scores increased. Um, we've also got over at JLM, um, I don't know if you're aware, they discontinued, uh, the blue ribbons, uh, but, uh, they were on track to receive a blue ribbon this year. We still want to celebrate their work and their efforts. And then Carolyn Lewis, uh, the growth award, uh, they received, they were our A-campus, uh, in our elementaries this year, uh, so we're thrilled about that, all right? I'm going fast, y'all, I'm going fast. Okay, our middle schools, middle schools, same thing, we've got a few accolades there. Uh, I think everyone's heard about our high school, the growth that they had, uh, going from the eighty-third to the eighty-seventh percentile, we jumped roughly six-hundred high schools, um, very, very excited, uh, about their scores in U.S. News World Report. And then there's many mother, many other accolades for our middle schools, uh, but I won't belabor that. I know we're trying to stay on a, on a timeframe tonight, okay? So champions, you've just seen a handful of them come through the door, excited about them. Our junior high athletic programs and our, uh, senior high athletic programs, these are conference champions or co-conference champions, our coaches are listed down at the bottom, and then you move over to our state champions, volleyball, back-to-back, uh, bowling, back-to-back, our bowling boys, uh, our bowling girls were back-to-back, our bowling boys twenty-twenty-five champs, our unified basketball team of three-peat, uh, they're going for a dynasty right there. And then Yin-Yo Yang, two-time girls golf, individual state champion twenty-four and twenty-five. A lot of really good things happening, who we are. All right, so that's a snapshot of who we are in Conway. Moving forward from that, what are we building? What's the foundation look like? What have we done thus far from July until November? So, I want to hit again, uh, I think we're aware of our core values, a mission and vision statement, but our district priorities. We wanted to come in July and August and we wanted to identify, as a board and as a team, what do we need to do to stay focused on the main thing? If everything's important, nothing's important. So our four priorities for the school year were academic achievement and student success or services, culture of excellence, transparency and trustworthiness, and stakeholder-driven strategic plans. I can tell you today that we've worked hard on each one of those four endeavors, and I'll give you a little bit more information about those. So if you think about the CPSD forums, we've been fortunate to have seven of those forums. We had a CAT forum, communication, accountability and transparency at that, at that, at the, they're keeping me on time back here. All right, I've got it, I've got it, I'm, I'm coming to a close. Um, on that, uh, note, the CAT forum, we had one of those for the whole district, that was for every campus, any parent, patron that would like to come out for that, we answered questions, we solicited feedback, uh, and we made adjustments based on, based on that. We've had two reading forums, two behavior forums, and two math forums. We understand that there was a need, uh, if you remember at the beginning of the year, what are we doing for reading? What are we doing for math? What are we doing for some of these significant behaviors that we see across the district? We mobilized, we had forums, we had our patrons come out, we took feedback, we made plans and we made adjustments. Our plans are listed here, those will be hyperlinked, uh, for your view and pleasure. And then CPSD Community Champions Program, that's a volunteer program. If you want to be a volunteer, Mr. Eric King, you go through that channel, we welcome our volunteers, of course, there's a process, uh, we've had a good turnout on that. And then our steering committee work. Steering Committee, again, I want to give a kudos, uh, to Dr. Standrich, who works with the CDC and the Chamber of Commerce, he has been amazing to bridge some of those gaps, uh, to ensure that we have communication, to ensure that we have teamwork and a partnership, uh, to make sure we're doing what we need to do, not only for the school district, but for the community at large. So I want to tell you again, I appreciate your work on that. I hit on the pre-K collaborative. So that brings us to the Conway High School roadmap. All right, so if you look at DESI and you'll hear some of the lingo out there in the education world, you'll hear the three Es, enlistment, enrollment and employment. Those are the three endeavors that the schools are working towards. We want you to be able to enlist, we want you to be able to enroll, or we want you to be able to be employed, okay? So what is that gonna look like? We're gonna move you forward, we're gonna think through a graduate profile. The work that we're gonna begin to do in the spring is to identify what are the core, what are the core pieces of a graduate? What are those factors that we're looking at as a team when we visit with our, with our community, when we visit with our administrators, especially with the high school? What are we looking for when that student leaves a high school for them to be prepared? When they leave, you can think of your military and first responders, you think, you can think about your colleges, you can think about the technical programs and the workforce. Again, I will not belabor that, we've done a really good job of breaking down what we offer right now, uh, so you can go back and take a look at that, but keep this slide in mind. When you get to a, a high school graduate and you're thinking about all those opportunities for them to go into, there's a lot of college opportunities right here in central Arkansas. There's a lot of industry and business right here in central Arkansas. So if you think of a grow your own, we've gotta do a really good job of going out and partnering with the businesses, the industries and the colleges. So when our kids leave the high school and they get a degree, they can come back and they can work right here at NavHoltz, they can work at WestRock, Verco, the Chamber, Conway Public Schools. What are we gonna do to ensure we have that pipeline? Well, Dr. Standrich's coming in, visiting with the Chamber, uh, there's a lot of connections there, there's a lot of rapport and relationships, and we feel like that partnership is gonna thrive moving forward. So, we are defining the future, and what does that look like? So once you have those partnerships and you start this work, the way we broke this down was Project Conway Forward, C-Ford. And when you think about academics, when you think about the arts, when you think about activities, and when you think about ac-, and you think about athletics, each plan needs to include opportunities for our community to partner, sponsor and donate, ensuring every group has the resources they need to grow and succeed. So I will not go through each one of the bullet points, uh, but I want you to see some of the things that we discussed under academics, mentor and behavior plans, math and reading focus, pre-K collaborative, all of those things, we've gotta have someone that is in-depth in chairing those committees and chairing that work, the same way that we did our reading plans, the same way that we did our math plans, we've gotta make sure that we have someone that's taking ownership in those activities and getting input from the community. When you think through a mentoring plan, we've been able to reach out to Judge Braswell, and there's a lot of students that are going through situations where if there's someone that can get their hands around them, they can get in there and do the work before they decide, hey, I'm gonna drop out, or I'm gonna be truant and not come to school, or I'm gonna be late. What kind of, what kind of work can we do to bridge that gap to keep that student in school? And that's what we're looking for on our mentoring efforts. Thelma Moten, Choosing to Excel, there's a list, there's a litany of those that have come together under the leadership of Mr. Echols, and we're moving towards a really good mentoring plan. You think about the arts, when we go after all of these endeavors, you're gonna have a committee that comes together, it could be comprised of the band chair, a choir chair, orchestra and theater. We need to be working at those endeavors the same way we would at athletics. We need to take care of all of them, because when students have something beyond the classroom that they're- We need to take care of all of them because when students have something beyond the classroom that they're excited about, that's when they show up, that's when they work really hard, uh that's when school becomes more than just a place they go for day-to-day in classroom. They become, come to school because that's an identity for them. That's something where their friends are, that's something where they really feel valued and they see success. So athletics, I won't go through that one in entirety, uh but activities, you know, we've got clubs from FBLA, FFA, FCLA and Key Club. Um, for each one of these, the vision is to develop a committee uh that works on these entities and you have a chair. And they come together once a quarter to say, hey, what do we need to do? What are some things we're doing really, really well? And where are some areas that we need to improve and work? Past that, who in the community is really passionate about one of these four endeavors and wants to get involved? And then the work becomes really easy to explain what our focus is and where we need help to build the whole student, all right? So as you think about that, I want you to think about our focus that we started off with five months ago. Number one, if it didn't pertain to our students, our teachers and our staff, our parents and our families, it wasn't gonna, there were, was not gonna be a lot of time put into that because we had to prioritize our work. And the way we feel is if you take care of your teachers and your staff and your students, that's gonna take care of your parents and your families. The way we lead, if you have a good attitude and you work really hard, good things are gonna happen. Plan your work and work your plan. If you've got a plan and you work that plan, you can always come back to it and make adjustments. That's what we've been able to do. We've gotta go out and build relationships, even when there's naysayers, even when there's folks that do not want it to succeed, you've gotta go in, you gotta sit down and you gotta hear what they have to say because there could be a nugget of truth, there could be an idea in there that you've gotta find and take back because that's what's best for our kids. All right, and then being responsive. When situations occur, we can't sit around and wait. Uh, we've gotta move with a sense of urgency and ownership to take care of them. Decentralized command and ownership, and I'm bringing this thing home, I got thirty seconds. Decentralized command and ownership, once our team knows what the plan is, and they're out working that plan. We've gotta trust that we've put leaders in place to go out and make decisions and help move this thing forward. This is a, this is, this is a cruise liner, this is not a jet ski, so things don't change on a dime. We've gotta have people that are working in the same direction and know what that plan is. So when you have decentralized command and you take ownership of your responsibilities and your leadership, good things happen. I've heard bleed blue a whole lot since I've been here. My hope is that we start to embody that. That we come together knowing what our district is, knowing what we've gotta work towards, and we all come together to make sure that our students, the number-one focus in a school, has everything they, they need to be successful moving forward. I look forward to working with the community, continue to work with the school board, our patrons, and keep it on, moving this district forward. And uh, I hope we're all bleeding blue. That's all I got for you tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Board, what she's handing out is a pamphlet that we can place uh at the chamber. Uh, we can place those at hospitals, we can place those at uh some of our daycares, different facilities. That's an overview of what we just went through. I want to take a minute to thank Caitlin Riles and Tiffany Strohman. They worked very, very hard uh on bringing a vision to life, and uh you can take a look at this and see this. And um, really, really good work. So I appreciate your work on this, ladies. Good job.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you for that and your report. Uh, we appreciate that information. At this time, a district financial report uh from Mr. Scott. Firstly, I hope I didn't mess your name up, I probably did. Seriously, I'm sorry.
I don't really like to go after bleed blue and all that passion because what I'm gonna talk about is really boring, but I'm gonna make it short. So uh, I have the honor of serving as the school district's municipal advisor. I usually appear here when you're gonna do something financial or related to your millage. So it is a state law that the school district has to give patrons notice of what's going to be on the ballot in next year's election. So even though we're in twenty-twenty-five, we're going to go ahead and approve a proposed budget for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And the reason for that is, the election in twenty-six, all schools now have to have their elections in March. So the election in March of twenty-six, that millage goes in effect January the first of twenty-seven. Those taxes are due in October of twenty-seven, which is the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. So the notice is run one time in the local paper, you are not bound by the budget. Um, it's just to get an estimate of where you think you would be in two years from now. And then the paragraph that is below it is a restatement of your millage, which is what will be on the ballots in March. And if you scroll down just a little bit, um, there's a statement on there that says, "The total proposed school tax levy of thirty-eight point one mils represents the same rate presently being levied." Even though you're asking for no change, it is a requirement that you ask the question. If for some reason a majority of the voters vote against keeping the tax the same, then you default to the previously approved ballot, which means that the millage stays the same. But it is a requirement, so there's a motion there for you to meet your requirement. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I just want to say I appreciate your patience tonight, Scott. It's always good to see you.
It's good to see you. I listened to a lot of these, yours was uh delivered with great passion and much more colorful slides. I have two more to go this week, so I'll, I'll let you know how you did.
Thanks, Scott, I appreciate that. Had to do it quickly, too.
At this time, uh, we need a motion to adopt the uh, the tax proposed budget of the expenditures uh of the financial year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-seven, to and including June thirty, twenty-twenty-eight, and to approve the related sample ballot.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next is the board financial report by Dr. Ashley.
This is one of those occasions where you feel like you're uh, probably kinda like uh Green Bay. And you make a good trade and you get Micah Parsons, one of the best defensive players there is. Sean's kinda like our Micah Parsons. We've got uh one of the best uh financial guys in the state uh to come pitch it for us. So I am thrilled, thrilled uh that Mr. Sean Higginbottom is here with us. So I'm gonna let him, we're gonna kinda tag-team this together. He's, he's studied this and presented a lot more of these than I have, and I thought I presented to the boards a lot. Uh, but Sean has done an outstanding job, he's been with us since day seven. And uh, week two, he came back for the next week, so we were very thrilled when he walked in the door on Monday. Uh, my heart did not skip a beat this time. So we're thankful he's here. So Sean, I'm gonna let you kinda lead and a board will knock this out.
It's a little bit unexpected lead on this, Dr. Ashley. But uh, you have, in your information, the uh, the financials for the month ending October thirty-first. Significant, of note, is uh the significant increase in balance compared to the year before, which is due primarily to some large tax collections in October. Several million more than are usually collected in October, and it's just a matter of timing. It's nothing to get excited about, they normally have come in in November, but the county got um ahead and gave us two payments in October, and we're proud they did that because that, those funds are currently earning four-point-four-seven-five in the bank. So that's to our benefit. Um, we had some transfers out of uh operating to food service to cover uh student meal debt from last year. We can't pay for those with child nutrition funds, you are aware of that. Included in the balance in operating is a million-dollar uh revenue for loss of fixed assets. Uh, we had an insurance claim, partial payment that they paid a million dollars on, we have several.
Yeah, we still, I'm thinking we're gonna be about two and a half million, uh so we're still working through. Very tedious process. They turn in, we turn in what we've, we've lost. Uh, Servpro turns in what they claim, uh NavHoltz turns in what they claim, and the insurance company goes through it line by line by line, asking, you know, that's not gonna be allowed expense, that is gonna be allowed expense. So Servpro, NavHoltz, file all that out, uh and we end up paying and get reimbursed all the, I think I've shared with you guys before, fifty thousand is what our deductible is, so we get all that reimbursed.
So we're incurring the expenses now, but the revenue hasn't, all the revenue hasn't come in. Fund six, which is federal funds, there are positive balances, that's unusual. Most federal funds are done on reimbursement basis and usually run negative until the reimbursement's come the next month. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the financial statements.
Remember, we've had, over the past play year, we've been negative in federal funds. So maybe we've just, you know, finally caught up to some of the things that we hope, you know, normally those have been uh negative.
I got a question. The government's been shut down, as everybody knows, for a while. Did that affect any of our funding?
We haven't, um, we haven't seen any slowdown of any uh federal reimbursements. They picked right back up in September. We usually don't get any in August or September or July and August, they pick back up in September. So we're seeing some revenue trickle in, um, ROTC and all the other federal funds, we're, we're pleased with where we are with revenue. But like I said, it's a positive balance, so um hopefully they'll get things back rolling in full force.
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Ashley. I know that you uh helped us through a transition. I'm excited as well uh for Mr. Higginbottom. You guys share a similar hairstyle and uh similar, similar way of doing business. Uh, so we're excited about Mr. Higginbottom and uh the transition will officially occur board next, next month. He'll, he'll be there alone, and I think he's about to give us our next information. This is a, a really good way for him to come into a uh school board meeting for his first one here with us.
I told you it was much better for me.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, Mr. Pitt is turning his mic on.
No, you answered it with the influx more of revenue, so you already answered it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion to approve the board financial report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, um. Okay, at this time, I think we're going into a staff bonus proposal.
Yes, ma'am. Um, it's not often that your first recommendation to the board is one that you can make everyone you work with happy. So, um, I'm pleased to make this recommendation to you tonight to distribute a bonus to employees uh based on years of experience. Uh, you see on the screen how that breaks down. It is the same structure as last year. It rewards all employees. Uh, we are um contributing additional resources to experienced employees who have reached the top of their salary schedule and haven't seen uh a step increase in, for some of them, many years. Our most senior employees that have over forty years of experience, for example. Uh, it's an incentive for, with, for employees with fewer years of experience to stay the track, stay the course, continue with the district if they know um these will be rewarded increasingly as, as they um continue on their journey. Included matching in retirement costs in this proposal, we appropriated funds in the budget that you approved in August or September. And if approved, it would be distributed to employees before the Christmas holiday. Uh, the amount to be distributed to employees is two million and eight thousand, and the total cost is two-point-four. So it's my pleasure to bring that to you on behalf of Mr. Black, and I would ask that you uh approve that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have one. So um, totally believe that um teachers and educators should get raises and they're not getting um paid enough after they get the raises. Um, just one concern, I think I mentioned last month about funding for the next school year um versus this school year with enrollment declining. Uh, just wondering, have you looked into that or, and not that's fine, but I was just wondering, how are we really, far as looking forward?
It's day seven, so I might ask for a little grace on that. So, uh, I don't know if I'm ready to give that comprehensive of an answer.
I will say with that, Dr. Petty, uh that I didn't go, you know, as I said, I wasn't gonna belabor the plan. Uh, one of the things that we'll need to discuss moving forward is a virtual opportunity uh for the students in Conway. Uh, there's roughly six hundred students uh that are participating, participating in virtual opportunities. Uh, it's somewhere where we definitely need a footprint moving forward. It's something that you need to consider, and uh I'll definitely be bringing that to you in the spring uh for you to discuss.
Is it six hundred students that are not in the district but still stay within the school district parameters?
Yeah, they would be within the parameters. Yeah, and, yeah.
Hey, and what's our total enrollment right now? Do we know, do we have a number?
Ninety-five hundred. Yeah, ninety-five, nine thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Is the fifty thousand dollar the minimum that, you know, the Sarah Huckabee got put in? Is that the last raise that our teachers have had? How, how do we make raises happen? I, I know they appreciate the bonuses. I know they appreciate these bonuses, but they get about half of them, you know, when it comes down to real money.
I think the benefit of having somebody like Sean that has, Mr. Higginbottom, that has done this, um, has, as a, as a young superintendent, he was one of the guys that taught superintendents finance. Um, so I, I, I'm excited to work with Sean as he starts to explore and dig in and truly focus on what we can do, long-term planning. He and I talked about, Mr. Black has stressed that to him, to start looking and seeing where we can uh just to manage and have a long-term vision for our, our finances. So again, board, I appreciate your willingness to uh trust Mr. Black as we've searched this out. It's not an easy situation that we've kinda dealt with in finance, and so we're very, very thankful uh that we brought Sean out of the, out of retirement. We're very thankful for his wife to encourage that uh approval and his two children for spending all his money uh to, to need him to come back to work. So again, we're just thankful for, we're thankful for everyone.
I would say Ms. Hargis, enrollment is a big driver of finance, it's one of, but also um, you notice that fifty-five percent of our revenue comes from local property tax. So as long as this community is growing and um paying its taxes, then we should have something to look at as far as increasing uh rates for our teachers. And that's my number one, number two, and number three priorities.
That's right, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, are we ready for a motion to approve the staff bonus proposal for all current Conway Public School District employees as presented, pending PPC review?
Motion made.
All in favor, aye? All, any opposed? Eyes have it.
Great job, gentlemen.
Hey Sean, I hope you negotiate your contract like Parsons.
Okay, at this time, we will go straight into our action item by Ms. Shasta Wagner, our general counsel.
Good afternoon, board. So what you guys have in front of you and was linked to the agenda is a, uh, this is an amendment to our, um, this is the policy that we had to develop for bell-to-bell no cell. And what it is, is if you will, Ms. Conway, scroll down for just a sec, until you hit the red, that's the, there you go. So the only amendment on it is that students can now remove their phones um in order to enter the two-factor authentication they need to access their current um concurrent credit coursework. So this should have been in the policy, it was not in the model policy. DESI let us know that it wasn't here, and so DESI asked all of us who had adopted the model policy, which we did, um, to add this to it and then resubmit our policies to DESI by December fifth, and which is why I'm here asking you guys to go ahead and approve this tonight instead of doing a thirty-day read because obviously thirty-day read would put us beyond the December fifth deadline to get this back to DESI. This is the only um update, and this language was taken verbatim from DESI and plugged into the policy. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Could we have a motion to approve the policy?
So moved.
All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Ms. White. Next, our information items will be coming from Dr. Jeff Standrich.
Good evening, uh, members of the board and, and ladies and gentlemen. So uh, just a brief update on the strategic plan. So you all know we have the strategic plan steering committee and, and uh we have engaged Winrock International to be our community engagement partner, and they're engaged in a number of surveys. Uh, we currently have surveys for taxpayers and citizens, and you'll see a QR code to the left there. Uh, business and industry, so business owners, industry executives and what have you, we have a QR code to the right there. So uh, we wanted to make that available to everyone. We've had uh across those two surveys, we've had almost a thousand responses so far. Um, and we're gonna continue uh promoting those surveys through November the thirtieth, and those will serve as the first round of information that we will collect. In addition, we have uh surveys going out from the school district to In addition, we have surveys going out from the school district to parents, to teachers and staff, and to students, grades eight through twelve. And we've collected about a thousand of those, a little over a thousand of those so far, and we'll continue collecting those through November the thirtieth. And then we're also working through a variety of channels to collect surveys from parents with children not in Conway Public Schools. They live in Conway Public Schools but have their children either homeschooled at Conway Christian, at St. Joe, or perhaps in another district, and so we're looking to get that feedback as well. All of those surveys will be completed by November the thirtieth, first part of December. Those will be tabulated. The steering committee will then review those reports as well as a focus group plan that will happen within the footprint of the district. Focus group interviews in the vicinity of each campus, perhaps even on those campuses. We still have to work through that. And we'll be looking to have twenty to thirty at least participants in each of those focus groups. Those surveys will then be brought back, rather, surveys and focus groups will be tabulated and analyzed by Windrock. That information will then be provided to the steering team. We will then take that information, we being the administration, myself, and the board, and use that information to inform the creation of our long-term strategic plan. With the idea of that strategic plan, again, being ready for presentation to the board and adoption, May, hopefully, June at the early, at the latest. So for, ready for implementation July one. Okay? So that's our strategic plan, and if you got a chance, you're in the, you're in the room here, you want to take a picture of those QR codes, we would encourage you to do that. Please also share those with folks who are taxpayers and citizens in the Conway Public School District as well. So, okay? Any questions on the strategic plan?
I would just like to make a statement. I'd like to thank the steering committee along with, who includes some of the Conway Public School staff, also the Chamber of Commerce and Windrock for, and obviously you, Mr. Standridge, for working so well together in partnership to come up with these surveys. And I think it would be a good tool for us to use, and I hope that the public will actually participate.
We'll certainly be promoting and promoting and promoting yet again throughout the, the entire month of November. All right, so we move into the update on the superintendent search. We have received, let's see here, sixteen submissions for the superintendent position from eight states. Arizona, New Mexico, Maryland, and Georgia, to the far west and the far east, if you will. And then with five applications from Texas, two from Oklahoma, one from Missouri, and four from Arkansas as well. Little bit about the evaluation of those. I think it's important that you guys appointed a search committee, search advisory committee. It's been clear that that search advisory committee is in fact an advisory committee, providing advisory information for you all as you move through the process of narrowing the list and ultimately selecting a superintendent. The process that was followed, the applications closed on Tuesday night at midnight. On Wednesday and Thursday, that search committee of thirteen people plus myself put in about a hundred, a little over a hundred person hours, if you will, actually going through all of those applications in detail, and each of you received those applications, and collectively, they were about that thick in terms of just the sixteen applications we received, some thicker than others. And they scored all of those using the rubric that, that we had adopted back in the September meeting, I believe it was. Thirteen elements that they evaluated on a scale of one to five. Those elements fitted, fit rather into the categories of required qualifications that you all adopted, the preferred qualifications that you all adopted, and then some more general assessments of the quality of their experience relative to Conway Public Schools. All of that information was then tabulated, and so I propose to you guys that we, because there was quite a gap in the top three folks relative to their search advisory committee evaluations versus the second group in, in the list, there was a, a gap of about point three five points. From tier two to the lower tier, there was a gap of about point two, three points. But if you take a look at that middle group and you, and you score them on average, that, those, those middle three, their scores were closer to the bottom than they were to the top. So my recommendation to you all is that you take those top three candidates, which would be Bruce Geary, Jason Black, and Tamika Brown, and you consider moving those forward to the, and advancing to the final stage of the, of the search process.
I was the board representative for the, the search advisory committee, so let me just say, first of all, Jeff, I appreciate that. One, the recommendation, but two, the work you put into it. When we went in to do these, you had all eight hours, very easy process for us to do. And yes, lot of hours. It's a lot to go through all of those, and some had more information than others, but I, I mean, are we going to discuss now?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I'm good for that. After, after, and I know that you guys did as well, after looking through all these and being on that side of it, now this side of it, doing a lot of the legwork on the front end, I'm good to take the, the recommendation.
Yeah, I should point out that Mr. Cummings was part of the, the actual search advisory committee as well, so went through all of the process.
Every bit of it, yes.
I would like to say that I want to thank the community because, for making the nominations for the committee. So we definitely got a lot of input from our community, and those people on the committee are put, volunteering to put their work in and to put these hours in. I think it would be a disservice not to take your recommendation along with the committee and go forward with those three top people.
I, I would, I think I appreciate that, and, and one of the things that I think is vitally important is one of the single greatest risks that we have to the search process is community support as a strategic risk. You know, we need our community to support the, the, the search, and we need them to support the ultimate selection that you guys decide on. The second thing that I would, and that search advisory committee is a great way to do that and to receive that input. The second thing that I want to point out, and, and I've said this to each of you with whom I've spoken, is that I'm treating this process like I'm evaluating a potential CEO to run one of the organizations that I'm responsible for. And so in doing that, every interaction, every single interaction with them, whether it's an email, a text message, a lack of email, the quality of their application, the punctuation and grammar and usage in their, in their letter, the format of, of their, their resume, and every, every single thing is a job interview. And so I'm, I want you to know I'm approaching this process in that fashion as well. And any feedback that I get from those evaluations, I'll certainly pass that along.
I just would like to ask something. I know this was based strictly on application, on a rubric, correct? And there is a superintendent in Pine Bluff, her name is Jennifer Barbary. And I've, I've done some checking on some of the others that are listed here. She is in Arkansas, and I just wondered if we might be open to adding her to the list. I've heard good things about her. Jennifer Barbary. She's from Pine Bluff.
Just based off that she's from Arkansas, like?
No, I mean, I looked at her resume.
Okay.
She's, she was put in Pine Bluff, I believe, to bring them out of distress.
That's correct.
I, I don't know exactly if it was successful. I don't know that.
Okay.
But I, I just thought there were some good things on her application, and I'm just throwing it out there.
Also, to go along with Mrs. Hargis, and I have the information in front of me, I am for actually not the finalists, but semifinalists. So that'll include three more people. I'm not sure. I guess I could say their names, Shayna Perry, Kate McGee, and Jennifer Barbary. And that way, it'll be four out of six of those candidates are current Arkansas superintendents. So that's what I'm for.
So if I, so I think I'm hearing, going, going for the semifinalist list, you're, you're, you would be in favor of that? And then, so that would be taking six semifinalists, the top six as semifinalists. The way we had originally orchestrated the process was you would then begin engaging in a series of virtual interviews if you went that route. You would all then narrow it down to the number of finalists, which could be one, two, or four, whatever you chose from that. And then we would begin the in-person interviews and the, the applications process, or, or, background check process.
I, I want to say that, I mean, we're here of being transparent about the process, and I honestly think that for us to go against, again, the committee and Dr. Standridge's recommendation, it kind of put a, a bad taste in the process.
Let me, let me be clear about something, Mr. President, if I can, is the, 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 the recommendation of the, of the three was a Jeff Standridge recommendation. I want to be clear about that.
Okay.
The committee actually scored. They did not, they did not engage with one another. They came and scored them individually using their collective. So I just wanted to be transparent and clear that the recommendation to move with the top three was my recommendation.
And you are the one we're paying.
Dr. Petty, help. Oh, go ahead. You want, you wanted to include the, the other three semi, well, the, the next three down due to their, to the score or to their relation to being in Arkansas? Help me, help me understand that, please.
Sure, so, um, so the next three tier, if done, will be semifinalists. So out of those three, there are two individuals who are currently Arkansas superintendents as well. So therefore, we'd be able to hear from six people in which four of them are current superintendents in the state of Arkansas. And that's just from my line.
And I, and I'd be glad to share my perspective on why, you know, further why I went with the top three. One was just the difference in scores, right? They were, they consistently distinguished themselves. One of the candidates, and I, and I don't want to talk by these candidate, these candidates by name, but one of the candidates in the next three is unemployed and, and resigned abruptly July the thirty-first. Had a conversation with this person and just a lot of things going on there, and so that was kind of a red flag for me. One of the other candidates that is in the next three, his average, the average tenure of that candidate is one point three years over the last two positions, and that created a real concern for me as well. So that's why I recommended going with the, with the top three. Even though they scored well, there was contextual information that I thought, as I said, I'm evaluating this relative to if I were looking for a CEO for one of my organizations, I felt that was important information for us to take into context.
And I checked into it also, and that is the reason that I suggested Jennifer. I don't know if it's Barbary, Barbary, whatever it is.
I think, I think it's worth noting, and board, you, you guys all have the packet, that when Dr. Standridge asked for all this information, and they've reached out to folks when they didn't send information, some did and some did not, right? So, and you guys will notice if you're looking at some, it's ten to fifteen pages and some, three pages. And, and I'm not saying those, those should be punished, but I mean, to, to Jeff's point about looking at this for, like, all that stuff matters, right? So, and the numbers that we are looking at as far as these top three, that is a combination of what they did, what they said, how they interacted with him, and obviously, the twelve independent of us not working together that all came to this, to this top three.
Yeah, I, I would say, I, I will share, quite frankly, a conversation that I had with one candidate. He communicated to me that we weren't going to make a decision, a hiring decision, based upon the resume that was submitted or the, the application that was submitted. That's why he didn't take much time with it, and my response was, well, no, we certainly won't make a hiring decision based on that, but we'll make a cut decision. So it's, it's at the pleasure of the board, whatever you all decide, if, you know, if, if you want to go with the top three, if you want to go with the top three, add one, or if you want to go to the top six.
Can I ask, was that, the conversation just stated, was that the second one, the people in the second tier?
No.
Okay.
No. No, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
He was asking if the conversation I just relayed was someone in that second tier, and I said it was not. It was someone further down the list.
Okay.
So Jeff, one, I appreciate all the hard work. I know we've all visited with you. I know the time the committee's put in. I absolutely understand the rubric and, and spent all weekend going over these applications, and some of them are really excellent and some of them not up to par, to be honest with you. My worry is that on a few of these applications, even if we're going to talk about the, the lady Linda's talking about, I mean, her resume, just looking at it, looked, looked pretty impressive to me.
Very much so.
And so my thing is, I get the numbers and stuff. I just want to make sure that we don't miss somebody on the cusp that when they come in and interview, because it's hard for me to, I can get what all they've done, but it's a little different to sit down with them and, and visit with them and all that. That's just different for me, and I'm just speaking for me. So I, I just want to make sure that we aren't leaving anybody out because of a, of the paper that they show.
Completely.
But, but if they're impressive enough and, and we get an interview and we don't hire them, okay, that's, that's good. But at least we've, we've spent, to me, just some extra time to try to make sure we're doing the right thing.
For sure.
Will you remind us, whether it's three or six, what the next process looks like?
Well, if it's six, then it would be virtual interviews with you guys, and you guys narrow it down to the finals before we start the in-person interviews, background checks, reference checks, et cetera. If you decide to go with three or four, which would be the top three and then adding the one that, that Ms. Hargis suggested, then I would recommend you move it to the finalist stage and go ahead and start bringing those people in and doing the detailed in, in-person interviews. And in that process, what I envision there is you all must interview them after five PM. So I would envision the search advisory committee interviewing them in the afternoon, maybe, maybe having lunch with them and interviewing them early afternoon, then giving me the opportunity, and oh, by the way, we'll be focused on those key leadership characteristics that, that you all approved, in addition to things that we found in their applications that created questions. And we'll be questioning on those things, and that would give me the opportunity to, to, to data enter all of those results to provide you that information for your interviews later that evening. And so we would start scheduling those. If, if we, if you decided to go with three or four, I would recommend we advance to that stage, and we start that process as soon as we can begin scheduling them after Thanksgiving.
Just for note, to the, just for note, that fourth person actually ranks number six. So that person would be leapfrogging number five and number four if we do those top three, including Mrs. Hargis' suggestion of the fourth person. But that, that fourth person is actually in ranking, I'm, I'm sorry, ranking number six.
That's right. That's right. And that, and my rationale for, for that is the two contextual issues I mentioned a few moments ago. One of the candidates has an average tenure of his last two jobs of one point three years, and one of the candidates is unemployed and resigned and, and moved out of state, I believe, Ju- July the thirty-first. So that's numerically and mathematically, I would not normally say you would want to leapfrog, but because of that contextual information, if I were making the hiring decision as, as a chairman of an organization, hiring a CEO, I would be looking very, very seriously at those things.
Dr. Petty, what do you think about moving those four on to semifinal?
I don't understand the person resigned, but the other person, I'd just like to hear them out. And so if that's with the three and an addition of a leapfrog, I'm going to vote no.
What do we, make a motion? What do we do here?
So let's, did you have something, Ms. Leo?
Okay, so what I really hear from Leo is, I don't know enough. What I'm really hearing from Leo is the three and the second tier, but only getting one person from the second tier. But then I hear you say maybe two people from the second tier. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. I can, I can do that.
And that'll make five potential candidates.
Two, two, from the second tier.
Leo said three plus one, which would be the fourth, four, versus three plus two, which would be five. If we go to five, I would recommend you, you, you accept those as semi, accept those as semifinalists and start the actual virtual interview process to narrow it down.
So let's, let's.
It's up to you guys. I mean, ultimately, it's your pleasure, you know?
So let's start with who, who wants three, then who wants four? How many wants three? How many wants?
Let me just make a motion.
Okay, make a motion.
I'm going to make the motion that we, the first three and then the one in the second tier, who is Jennifer Barbary or Barbary or?
That's total of four.
That's four. I'm going to make that motion, so let's vote on that.
Mr. Chris, there are six.
I'll second that. I'll second the four.
All in favor? Raise your hand, because I can't. One, two, three, four. Okay. That's, that's enough.
I was going to say no, but.
Okay. Yeah, those that didn't raise our hands. Okay, so four, we will take the four candidates. Okay, so four, uh, we will take the four candidates, the three in the top tier and the one, number six.
Right.
In the second tier.
And, and I, I'm assuming that moving on to the finalist stage is what you guys want to do? I see the consensual nodding there.
Yes.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate you all, thank you.
Uh, Doc, let me ask another question. Do we need to go ahead today and schedule these? See if we can come together with a date? I mean, obviously, we can't talk about this outside.
Probably going to be multiple days.
Right, what dates?
Yeah, so, um, we can, we can, we can certainly.
Okay, so did, did we start the process of vetting and looking into them?
Yes, the, the background checks, the, the reference checks.
I mean, we're going to set a date and we have to have all that done by then?
So the, the idea with the original schedule was that we would be done with all the finalist interviews by Christmas break, by June, by, gee, listen to me, by December the twelfth, right? I think our board meeting is the night.
So we could have until December the twelfth to vet these people, interviews, all of it?
If, if we wanted to have a special meeting before, before Christmas to actually, you know, select the, the potential final candidate, right? Then we, then we would have across Christmas break to negotiate the contract and finalize the contract for approval at a January meeting.
And so you set up interviews?
Yes.
You'll set up the interviews?
That's right.
And then you, you'll, oh, go ahead. You'll also vet them correctly?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so, so let's talk about that for a moment. What the search committee will do, search advisory committee will do, is we will, I will put together a reference checking form for them. Um, and we will, we will check references that they submitted. We would ask you guys, I know that you're going to do some of your own vetting. I would ask you to try to refrain from checking the references they submitted, because that could be seven people checking them, plus the search advisory committee checking those same references. If you have contacts in those areas, I know you're going to rely on those. What we would do is we would check all of the references they submitted. We would then ask for other people in the district with whom we should speak. And we will, we will make calls, we will use our own network. Uh, for instance, I, I gave a couple of examples. Just with this group, I have a board member in another district where we had a, an applicant with a history and I was able to pick up the phone and, and call, call that person. Another candidate, I had someone that I was in the military with that worked with a candidate, so I was able to pick up the phone and gather information. We will use the totality of the search advisory committee's networks in addition to the references that they submitted. Uh, and then we will provide that reference information back to you in a standardized format. You all will then obviously do any other, uh, network, uh, leverage any networks that you have to do your own research.
Okay, so we will, if they ever want to vet them, then are you going to set up a time for the interview after that process?
No, that'll all be, I don't, I don't, I don't think we can sequentially do things. Like, I think that all of that'll be happening simultaneously, quite frankly, to, to try to get to that, you know, before Christmas date.
Jeff, for clarity, we, the Board, are not reaching out to the folks that they have listed on their resumes.
I, I would suggest you not, because, because the search advisory committee is going to call every single one of those. Yeah, uh, so if, if you all want to do some of your own vetting, my recommendation is use your own networks and, and what have you to do that, the collective networks.
So will you, are you going to come back in December to talk about dates for interviews, or do we need to do that now?
I think we, I think we need to identify some, some dates now, or, um, yeah, I, I think, I think we need to figure that out, because the idea being that we would, we would be almost finished by the December date, if, by the December meeting date, if not finished by then, in terms of the vetting process.
Okay, so you're saying by the December ninth meeting date, that we'll be almost finished with the, what?
With the interviews, you know, we don't have to be, right? We, we could schedule a special meeting. I, I hate to rush it, I, you know, I want to make sure we do the right thing. So we could schedule a special meeting sometime before Christmas in order to actually just focus on that and get the, get the candidate selected. Then everyone goes to Christmas break and we start the negotiation process for the contract. And, and, and we have plenty of time to get that done by the January date. So, so I would say, let's, let's just focus right now. Forget about the December ninth date right now. Let's focus on trying to get the interviews done before, say, the twelfth, fourteenth, somewhere around in there. Does that, does that sound reasonable?
So December the twelfth?
Yeah. And we'll need four days.
So you're going to give us some good days that work for you, your schedule?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, so today is the eleventh, right?
Yes.
So the following week is Thanksgiving, I'm assuming that's a bad week for everyone.
I thought Thanksgiving was twenty seventh.
Unless there is a date during the week of Thanksgiving that anybody would.
I would, I would think the first week of December, maybe.
So I, I.
So this is when we're coming together and all the vetting and interviews have to be done?
This is just, this is just, this is when we will, so, so we will have four dates. Let's say first of December and the twelfth of December. We'll have four dates where we will just interview the candidate, right? That's what we're trying to schedule now, is those interview dates. So, um.
Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
Is it possible to stack some of the interviews? So maybe do two or three or maybe even four on one day? Is that possible?
I, I, I would, if you want the search advisory committee to be able to get information to you between, I would say no more than two. But we could do that, we could, we could do that. So we could pick two dates and try to knock both of them out at the same time.
And these are going to start after work, is that what you said?
Uh, you, you all, because you are technically in a board meeting and you would be able to interview those, uh, you'd have to do it after five P M. Yeah. Now, the search advisory committee could do that before five.
It was my assumption that the finalists would be here all day, um, with tours and things of that sort. Has that changed?
Um, we, we don't have it scheduled yet, but they, they, not necessarily all day. I would say, I would say a couple of hours, you know? Maybe an hour and a half with the search advisory committee, maybe, maybe, uh, an hour and a half. You know, we're, we're going to have to divide and conquer, uh, if we do, if we do two, uh, in the same day, we'll have to divide and conquer some of that touring information. Then the, the search advisory committee would come together and interview them collectively.
Okay, and the interviews, another board will interview them.
Correct.
Anyone else?
The search advisory committee.
Search, they will interview you?
We will interview them.
Okay, but those two groups?
That's, those two groups, formal interviews.
I, I would like to see us do one a day if we can put that in all of our calendar. I think it gives each person more time.
Okay. So, um, I do know I'm traveling the first through the third of December, that's Monday through Wednesday, but I'm about, I could do the, the fourth.
I'm, I might stay the fourth and the fifth.
You're outstayed the fourth and the fifth?
Yeah.
Okay, let's look at the next week.
You're always in progress.
Eighth. Ninth.
I'm hoping that whole week.
Ninth is a school board meeting.
On nine.
Ninth is a school board meeting, yeah. So eighth.
At eight.
Tenth, eleventh?
Yes.
And we're just, we're going to do one a day?
Well, that, that would, that would get us through three of them.
I'm out of town on the twelfth.
Okay, so, uh, fifteenth? Or? Sixteenth, say again? Fifteenth or sixteenth is about as far as we could go, I think. What we, what we could.
How long do these interviews generally last? Can?
I, I would suggest you take ninety minutes.
So it seems like we could do two in a day.
But they, they have to do one that day. And then he's got to tab, get the scores to each of us from their interview. And then we do the interviews.
Here's my thought, right? If we did, what did we say, the? You're out third and fourth, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we did, um, eighth, tenth, and eleventh.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
The fourth and fifth, not the third.
Okay, so if we did eighth, tenth, and eleventh, right? So we could get three done there. Then we could do the sixteenth, do the fourth one, and you all convene, following that, to deliberate and, and pick.
The sixteenth, I'm in, uh, work meetings all the way to five. So I, I would need to be probably five thirty before I could start, maybe even six, depending on how late that last meeting goes.
What happened to the fifteenth?
Fifteenth?
Hey, I like five thirty.
To be honest, I, I, I have, I chair the Conway Regional Board.
Okay.
And we have a board meeting that night. I, I can miss it if that's, if that's the only time I can get a replacement.
Well, I think I heard Mr. Lee say the sixteenth after six, or six?
Yeah, probably six would be best. But if we're going to deliberate after that, I mean, it's up to y'all. I mean, surely we won't go past midnight again, so.
Actually, 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 we could do the, I, I'm not going to be involved in y'all's interview. I, I'm not, so y'all, so I, I could, we could do it on the fifteenth if you'd rather, and I could get everything done before then.
And you can do your part on the fifteenth?
I can do my part and get you ready, because my board meeting starts at six.
Okay.
What about the seventeenth? Is the seventeenth okay for everybody?
Works, works for me, why?
Well, I've, my daughter has a basketball game.
Okay, on the fifteenth?
On the fifteenth, yeah, a very important basketball game. No, that's on Tuesday, the seventeenth.
So we have the sixteenth at six, or we have the seventeenth at five?
Monday is the fifteenth, sixteenth is Tuesday, is on the Monday.
What's Christmas very young?
Seventeenth.
We don't have to be in school to do this session, do it.
No.
It's the eighteenth.
Eighteen, can anybody verify that? When does Christmas break start, four? Nineteenth, the nineteenth.
So if we start at the seventeenth, we could start at five and you all could get your deliberation done a little earlier.
Yeah.
All right, so let's do this, let's do, let's do, uh, we said eighth.
That's my wedding anniversary, but my husband is shaking his head, okay.
Does that work? Okay, eighth, the eight, tenth, eleventh, and seventeenth. Eight, ten, eleven, seventeen.
I think that was a trick question, Mr. Shannon.
Everybody good? Going once, going twice. Eighth, tenth, eleventh, seventeen.
And what times, what time are we talking about?
Five, five P M.
At all of them? Five P M, is that what you said?
Or, 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 I mean, it's up to you guys.
Dr. Naylor, can you make five P M?
Well, that's one, let me go, eight, ooh.
Seventeenth, five P M for sure, because you got your deliber, deliberation afterwards. We could do the.
Ten and seven, ten and seventeen, I'm good, on Wednesday. So, what do we got, ten, seventeen, I'm good.
Let's, let's do six, and make it easy. The only day we'll do five is the seventeenth.
Okay, so six.
Yeah, and I can do, I can do, I mean, if we're, I don't want to make it about me, but if we need to do five on the tenth, I'm good on that too.
No, let's just keep it simple.
If you want to keep six, that's good too.
And, and we'll do five P M on the seventeenth, and that's it. Yeah, the rest of them will be six.
Okay.
All right, five P M on the seventeenth, six P M on the other dates.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now we have Dr. Bennett.
Want to get up here and get going? All right, thank you, Mr. Black and Board. Tonight, we're going to take a quick look at some accountability data, give a quick update on our district math plan and the progress there, and celebrate some outstanding achievements from some of our schools. There we go. So for the first time, as Mr. Black said, the Arkansas Department of Education has issued district letter grades. I'm proud to say that Conway Public Schools has earned a letter B grade. And I know we've clapped a lot tonight, but if you can, give it up one more time for the students and teachers that helped make that happen, because that is truly tremendous. District-wide, yes, ma'am. This is a look at the district, uh, rating index calculation that's used to reach these grades. It is essentially the high school formula with district-wide achievement and growth scores compressed into it. Um, our score, um, I believe, actually, I don't have that, so I'm not going to tell you our exact score rating that, uh, put us in the position that we're in. Um, here is the distribution for district letter grades. We had twenty-three As across the state, ninety-eight Bs, ninety-eight Cs, twenty-four Ds, and eleven Fs across the entire state. And these charts will show you how we've, uh, continued to be competitive locally when compared to other school districts and compared to other seven A school districts across the state. So you can see Conway there, where we rank against some of our competitors. Here are the last three years' worth of letter grades. You can see the twenty-two, twenty-three letter grades that were the last grades calculated using the old formula. Twenty-three, twenty-four was the first, uh, letter grade calculated using the new formula, and that was the simulated grade or unofficial grade. And then you have the twenty-four, twenty-five letter grades here to the right. Conway Public Schools currently has one D, nine Cs, four Bs, and one A in total. Before we move on to some celebrations, I want to take a moment to address a question or a couple of questions that came from Dr. Petty, uh, earlier in this month about our current math plan progress and our current interim performance. Uh, these graphics show our current performance, uh, for interim one. Uh, what we're looking at currently is the percentage of students that are already at grade level compared to grade standards. Uh, I do want to be clear here that we can't do an apples-to-apples comparison for interim one because of a difference in timing for those assessments. Uh, you can see for the fall of twenty twenty-four, we gave interim one in week eighteen or thirty-eight percent of the way through the school year. Uh, this fall, we gave interim one, uh, across week seven and eight or twenty-one percent, uh, through the school year. This was at the request of some very forward-thinking principals that wanted to be able to utilize data from the first interim for the first teacher workday. So we moved the interim up to be able to accommodate that request. Uh, our outstanding director of programs and accountability, Ms. Shanda New, was able to calculate an adjusted fall score for us to have something that we could compare using proportional ratios. So if you look at the bar graph there, on the left, in blue, you've got the fall twenty-four scores. In solid red, you've got fall twenty-five actual interim scores. And then in pink with a red outline, you've got an adjusted fall score for twenty twenty-five. This score uses proportional ratios. Um, all data interpretations need to come with qualifying statements. So I want to be clear here that this is an approximation, not a prediction model or a validated growth projection. Uh, it does assume linear growth across time or that students will continue to grow at a fixed rate. Uh, but what it does let us do is estimate learning progress compared to our pacing guides in the year and also provide a more apples-to-apples comparison between the years, accounting for differences in test dates. We will keep these test dates the same moving forward, so teachers will have access to the data before the workday and will have a more valid, uh, accurate measurement going forward for interim one. And Ms. Courtney Knight is going to be bringing you our updated district math plan in December. All right, moving on to some celebrations. Um, Julie Lee Moore, as we mentioned earlier, has earned the distinction of exemplary, high-performing national blue ribbon school, uh, with students achieving in English and math in the top fifteen percent in the country. Uh, because of federal funding adjustments, we did not get to present, uh, Mr. Clark with his blue ribbon from, uh, the federal government. But we do want to take a minute and celebrate Mr. Clark and the teachers, students, and staff at J L M that made this possible. Ida Burns Elementary has earned distinction from the University of Arkansas's Office of Educational Policy uh, for the beating the odds award overall and for English language arts. Uh, a couple of standouts from the data with Ida Burns. They experienced a sixty-three point fifty-five point climb in their letter grade scores since twenty-three, twenty-four, and they are currently eighteen point eleven points away from achieving an A. So please help me celebrate Ms. Howell and the teachers and staff and students at Ida Burns Elementary. And then finally, uh, we of course want to recognize again Carolyn Lewis Elementary for outstanding performance. Uh, you can see here exemplary performance in all areas from this campus, scoring in the top twenty-five percent in eight out of nine scoring categories on the state accountability matrix. Karen Lewis has been an A for five years and is one of only seventy-two A elementary schools in the state out of five hundred and twenty-two. So we are extremely proud of the commitment and achievements of Ms. Sturdivant and their teachers, staff, and students. So give it up one more time for them. And then just to close out with a few updates, we've already talked about our community collaborative and how it's going. We've got our third grade promotion plan in the works and our tier one HQ IM pilot set to kickoff in January. And the district math plan will be brought forward to you in, uh, December as well. Uh, personnel, Mr. Black already covered this, but we have nine R B Ts out there and going, we're excited about them. Our sped designees for the middle school campuses are hired and getting ready to start, as well as an additional reading interventionist at the junior high. And we're preparing to add a second reading interventionist position, or I should say, another reading interventionist position, uh, to the high school. And then we've already begun scheduling professional development efforts across December through March for JET. And take-flight trainings have already begun and will continue through May uh, for our interventionists and teachers that are going to be serving students with reading intervention. And here's the B one more time, any questions?
Hey, Dr. Bennett, thank you.
Hey, Dr. Bennett, thank you. Uh, I appreciate Ms. Howell and Mr. Clark, the seasoned veteran, and, uh, Ms. Sturdivant, because those, that's impressive, all three of those. That was highly impressive. Appreciate it.
Sir, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett and team. Great things going on, I think it's good to say. Uh, I'm proud. I'm proud of the team. Uh, proud of the students out there. I'm proud of the board. We've gotten a lot done in five months. So good job to the team, the board, and everybody involved. Thank you all.
At this time, we will go into executive session for the purpose of considering employment and resignation.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ours have it. Okay. Any new business? No new business? At this time, we're going to recess and reset the boardroom for the employee hearing. So the staff is asking that everyone step out because they have to redesign this room for a hearing. And then you'll be allowed to come in. It would just take a few minutes. So if we can get you all to step out so that they can set the room up.